It's May 25th, 2021. At 7 o'clock PM, I'd like to begin call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of Canton Township. Clerk Seagres, can you please call roll?
Steve Borinski.
Okay, he's gone, he's absent today.
Sorry, I jump out of the Zoom screen, so when I'm on the agenda, I can't see. So if someone does, that's why I'm like, I stand there and...
Sorry.
Okay. Noted that trustee Borinski is absent. Foster?
I'm here. Good evening. I'm from Canton Township, my home.
Ganguly?
Good evening. I'm here at my home in Canton Township.
Graham Hudak?
Good evening. I'm here at Township Hall.
Clerk Seagres is in attendance from Canton. Treasurer Slavens?
Good evening from Canton.
And Snyderman?
I am here in Canton.
Thank you. Can I hear a motion to adopt the agenda with the addition of a resolution on APIA recognition month?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Clerk Seagres, please take a roll call on the motion.
Foster?
Aye.
Ganguly?
Aye.
Graham Hudak?
Aye.
Seagres, aye. Slavens?
Aye.
And Snyderman?
Aye.
Thank you. Agenda has been adopted. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of May 4th, 11th, and 18th, 2021?
So moved.
Second.
Clerk Seagres, please take roll call on the motion.
Foster?
Aye.
Ganguly?
Aye.
Graham Hudak?
Aye.
Seagres, aye. Slavens?
Aye.
And Snyderman?
Aye.
Thank you. Now it is time for public comment. So please state your name. You can raise your hand or hit star six. If you raise your hand as an attendee, I can bring you on. I'm going to raise your hand for public comment. Okay, I don't see any hands right now. Any public comment? Okay, there's also public comment at the end if you want another chance. Thank you. All right, can I have a motion to pay the bills?
Madam Supervisor, I make the motion that we pay the bills.
Support.
Thank you. Clerk Seagres, please take a roll call on the motion.
Foster?
Aye.
Ganguly?
Aye.
Graham Hudak?
Aye.
Seagres, aye. Slavens?
Aye.
And Snyderman?
Aye.
Thank you. We will now hear a resolution from Tanya Ganguly. If you will, please also read the type.
Good evening. Resolution to declare May 2021 as Asian American and Pacific Islanders Month in Canton Township. Whereas in 1977, Congress introduced a House Resolution to proclaim the first 10 days of May as Asian Pacific Heritage Week, a celebration of Asians and Pacific Islanders in the United States. Whereas in October 1978, President Jimmy Carter signed a joint resolution designating this as an annual celebration, which we now know as Asian Pacific Heritage Week. Whereas in 1990, May was chosen to commemorate the immigration of the first Japanese to the United States, which was in May 1843, and to mark the anniversary of the completion of the Transcontinental Railroad on May 10, 1869, in which the majority of the workers who laid the tracks were Chinese immigrants. Whereas in 1990, Congress voted to expand Asian Pacific Heritage Month heritage from a week to a month-long celebration. And in May 1992, the month of May was permanently designated as Asian American, Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. Whereas studies have found that the academic needs of Asian American and Pacific Islander students are frequently overlooked. Whereas understanding Asian and Pacific Islander history is an important part of celebrating Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Whereas Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders have endured and overcome hardship and heartache. In the earliest years of their immigration, tens of thousands of gold rush pioneers, coal miners, transcontinental railroad builders, as well as the farm and orchard laborers, were subject to unjust working conditions, prejudice, discrimination, and opportunity-limiting laws like the Chinese Exclusion Act of 1882 and the Immigration Act of 1924, and later the internment of Japanese Americans during World War II. Whereas even in the face of discrimination and hate, generations of Asian Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islanders have helped to make this country what it is today. Whereas racially motivated discrimination and harassment is at a high with a national and local spike in hate crimes against the API community, especially targeting its Muslim South Asian and Southeast Asian members. Whereas the history of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders in the United States is inextricably tied to the story of the United States. Whereas the Asian American and Pacific Islander community is an inherently diverse population composed of more than 45 distinct ethnicities and more than 100 language dialects. Now therefore be it resolved that the Canton Township Board of Trustees strongly encourages our community to observe, recognize, and celebrate the culture, heritage, and contributions of Asian American and Pacific Islanders to our nation, state, and our township, and hereby declare May 2021 Asian American Pacific Islander Month in Canton Township.
Second.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Tanya. Does anyone want to add anything? Okay, great. Clerk Seagres, can you please take a roll call on the motion?
Foster?
Aye.
Ganguly?
Aye.
Graham Hudak?
Aye.
Seagres, aye. Slavens?
Aye.
Snyderman?
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution passes. Next item on the agenda, we have two public hearings. So can I have a motion to open the public hearing for approval to amend the 2019 CDBG program year annual auction plan? I'm sorry, annual action plan.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to open the public hearing to hear comments on the amended 2019 annual action plan.
Support.
Thank you. Wendy, did you have a presentation at all, or you're just ready to hear public?
Just open for public comments. Actually, you could promote Mike Shepard as well and Carolyn Cox, in case there are any questions for them. They're integrally involved with this, but I have no presentation or comments.
Okay. Should I read the executive summary then before public comment?
Please do.
All right, so you guys are both on. All right, great. On April 3rd, 2020, Congress announced a Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Securities Act, CARES Act, and provided funding of $5 billion in supplemental CDBG funding for grantees to prevent, prepare for, and respond to the coronavirus. $53 million was awarded to help local governments in Southeast Michigan. Canton Township received $215,200. On September 11th, 2020, the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development announced the allocation of the remaining $1.988 billion in CARES Act funding for CDBG recipients. The allocation funds focuses funds toward places with households facing higher risk of eviction. Canton Township received $348,090. We have attached a detailed amended 2019 annual action plan to include the COVID-19 grant dollars awarded, CB1 and CB3, which includes the following program: subsistence payments totaling $353,152. Canton COVID-19 testing, diagnosis, and vaccination program, $119,000. Program and administration, $91,138. This plan was made available for the public for the required five-day public comment period starting on May 13th, and this meeting represents a required public hearing. So we have to have a vote on opening the public hearing, correct?
We just did that?
Did we? Okay, now, I'm going to go to the attendees. If you have any comments, please raise your hand if you are on the phone. You can hit star six nine about the public hearing. Just public comments right now. Okay, I don't see any hands. So I moved to close. Can I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
So traditionally, you would call for public comments three times?
Oh, okay, three times. Do we have any public comments? Any public comments? I see one phone. You can hit star six nine. Any public comments?
Madam Supervisor, I move to close the public hearing at 7:11.
Support.
Clerk Seagres, please take a roll call on closing the public hearing.
Foster?
Aye.
Ganguly?
Aye.
Graham Hudak?
Aye.
Seagres, aye. Slavens?
Aye.
And Snyderman?
Thank you. Does the board have any comments or questions?
Madam Supervisor, I move to adopt the 2019 annual action plan and authorize the submission of this plan to the Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, and to approve the attached budget amendment.
Support.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Okay, Clerk Seagres, please take a roll call on the motions.
Foster?
Aye.
Ganguly?
Aye.
Graham Hudak?
Aye.
Seagres, aye. Slavens?
Aye.
And Snyderman?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Thank you, Wendy and team. Great job. Okay, can I have a motion to open the public hearing for approval of the PY 2021 annual action plan and the five-year consolidated plan?
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to open the public hearing to hear comments on the amended 2019 annual action plan. Whoa. Ma'am Supervisor, allow me to correct myself. Getting the correct RBA. I move to open the public hearing for comment on the fiscal year PY 2021 through 2025 consolidated plan for the 2021 annual action plan.
Michael, can I just ask, did we do the fourth amendment to move budget in the previous item? And I missed it. Okay.
Yeah, he runs them at the same time.
Oh, you did it all at once. Thank you. Yep, thank you, Michael.
I do that with regularity.
I support.
Clerk Seagres, please take a roll call on the motion to open public hearing.
Foster?
Aye.
Ganguly?
Aye.
Graham Hudak?
Aye.
Seagres, aye. Slavens?
Aye.
Snyderman?
Aye.
Thank you. Every five years, HUD requires communities participating in the Community Development Block Grant Program to submit a five-year consolidated plan, which outlines priorities for the CDBG program for the next five years. The consolidated plan is an extensive document requiring considerable research and writing. Canton retained a consultant, Wade Trim, to prepare the plan under the direction of Canton Township. Canton's five-year consolidated plan considers the needs that HUD requires each community to address: general housing needs, the homeless, seniors, the mentally ill, lead-based paint remediation, public housing, fair housing, and barriers to affordable housing. Canton is already adequately addressing these needs with its own CDBG funds, or the needs are handled by outside agencies. Canton is not locked in by the consolidated plan and can be amended at any time to include new priorities or revisions to existing priorities. The one-year action plan is a portion of the consolidated plan that must be updated annually. It provides detailed information on the resources Canton expects to receive and the activities to be undertaken to meet the priority needs identified in the consolidated plan. The consolidated plan and program year 2021 CDBG annual action plan were developed at public hearings of the CDBG Advisory Council, and as its name implies, the recommendations of the advisory council are suggested, not compulsory. Program year 2021 CDBG program is consistent with past year's programs and includes a mixture of public service agencies and construction projects. The 30-day public comment for the consolidated plan and program year 2021 CDBG program ended May 22nd, 2021. The total CDBG budget for program year 2021 is $376,440. Recommended projects are First Step, $20,000; Neighborhood Legal Services, $20,000; Canton Youth Connection Program, $15,645; Administration, $74,194; Heritage Park ADA Playground, $141,134; and Housing Rehabilitation, $105,467. So I'm going to go to the public to see if there's any public comment during the public section. So is there any public comment? There is one phone number. You can hit star six seven, or you can raise your hand in Zoom. Any public comment? I don't see any, any public comment. All right, thank you. Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to close the public hearing, 7:13, 7:16.
Support.
Thank you. Can I have a motion? Is there any discussion or questions on the board?
Yeah.
To close?
Oh, not to close the meeting. Yep, go ahead. We can close the hearing.
I'm sorry. Can you take a roll call on the motion to close the public hearing?
Foster?
Aye.
Ganguly?
Aye.
Graham Hudak?
Aye.
Seagres, aye. Slavens?
Aye.
And Snyderman?
Aye.
Thank you. I hear a motion for board comment.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to adopt the program year 2021, 2025 consolidated plan and the program year 2021 annual action plan and authorize the submission of the five-year consolidated plan and annual action plan to the Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD.
Support.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Steven?
Yeah, Director Trumbull, I noticed that homelessness is mentioned in the document, and perhaps we've done that before. I don't know. I don't remember. I remember housing and improving housing. And I was just wondering if there's any specific programs that you can think of that we fund that actually affect homelessness in our community.
So, you know, I'm going to let Mike Shepard speak to some specific programs that we do to address that. I believe it's some of the housing rehabilitation that we do to ensure people do not become homeless, and some of the extra dollars that we spend to other agencies to help prevent that, like Wayne Metro. But Mike, I'll let you speak to that a little bit.
Sure. Yeah, there's, I mean, there's no homeless shelters in Canton Township. Our biggest program is the Housing Rehab Program, where we're trying to keep our housing stock healthy and vibrant and, you know, make sure that these homes are, you know, great neighborhoods, you know, Canton has. We do partner with other agencies, Wayne Metro. We will go out, we'll participate in a homeless point-in-time count in January every other year. So there's things, there's kind of programs and projects that we participate in that we don't have direct funding going to that. So to answer your question, the Housing Rehab is our biggest homeless prevention program.
Okay, so it's sort of dual, takes a dual role in fulfilling what's in this document, both the housing and the homelessness, by keeping people in their homes that perhaps are in disrepair. We are, and by fixing them up, we're able to prevent homelessness.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Diane? I just want to make a quick comment. I want to thank Mike and Carolyn and Wendy for working with this program, the CDBG. It really, it helps so many people in our community, and I know it's a lot of work, a lot of paperwork, so we truly appreciate all that you do for it. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
For this year, I would also like to recognize Mike. Mike's done a lot of work, especially with the COVID CDBG monies that have come in and trying to work with Wayne Metro to get the grant dollars allocated. Mike did follow up with them today just to see how much they have, how much our Canton residents have been assisted with the COVID funds. So our first, the CDBG COVID so far has about $150,000 have gone to help pay the rental payments and the mortgages for residents who might be suffering. They have been using some other federal dollars. And in the month of April alone, I believe is what they said. There's another source of grant dollars that it's kind of taken priority over the COVID grant dollars on CDBG that was specifically allocated to Canton. They received some additional money. And in the month of April alone of 2021, they distributed about $140,000 for Canton residents on top of the CDBG dollars. So Wayne Metro is really looking out to help our residents. So that's, that's a really good story.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, definitely. Great job, team. Thank you very much. I was at the meetings, and they were very good meetings. There's a lot of need out there. All right, thank you. Clerk Seagres, can you please take a roll call on the motion?
Borinski? He's gone. Foster?
Aye.
Ganguly?
Aye.
Graham Hudak?
Aye.
Seagres, aye. Snyderman?
Aye.
Snyderman?
You got it. Aye.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the consent calendar. Can I have a motion to cast a consent calendar?
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the consent calendar as presented with item C1, consider adoption of a resolution for approval of the application for additional MERS service credit by employee. And item C2, consider approval of an application for an MLCC special liquor licenses, for special liquor licenses.
Support.
Thank you. Clerk Seagres, can you please take roll call on the motion?
Foster?
Aye.
Ganguly?
Aye.
Graham Hudak?
Aye.
Seagres, aye. Slavens?
Aye.
Snyderman?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to the general calendar, item G1. Can I have a motion to consider approval of site plan for Home Depot Outlet?
Madam Supervisor, I move the board to adopt the following resolution, approve of the site plan for the Home Depot Outlet. Whereas project sponsor approval of the Home Depot Outlet site plan on property located on the tax parcel listed, located south side of Ford Road and east of Lost Road. And whereas Planning Commission reviewed the site plan for the Home Depot Outlet and voted 9-0, recommend approval of the request as it meets the design requirements of the zoning ordinance and is consistent with the approved special land use plan for Home Depot Outlet, subject to conditions. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees, the Charge of Township of Canton, Michigan, has hereby approved the site plan for the Home Depot Outlet on tax parcel number listed, located south side of Ford Road and east of Lost Road, as provided in the plan documents, including a modification to allow 82 parking spaces and parking in the front yard as shown on the plans, subject to any necessary revisions to the landscape plan to comply with the zoning ordinance and modifications to add signage and/or curbing to prevent 180-degree right turns exiting the pickup window lane.
Court? Thank you. The applicant recently split 1.82 acres from the Home Depot parcel with the intent of constructing a commercial development consisting of a 10,718 square-foot multi-tenant building, including a restaurant pickup window on the east side of the building. The site is located on the south side of Ford Road, east of Lost Road, and north of the existing Home Depot. The site is located in the C3 District and the Corporate Park overlay district. The applicant previously obtained special land use approval for the following uses listed in section 6.08 of the zoning ordinance: carryout restaurant, standard restaurant with accessory pickup window, medical, dental, clinic, financial institution, business service establishments, childcare center, general retail, office building, training educational apparel, bookstore, stationery shop, convenience grocery, drugstore, barber shop, hairstyling salon, clothing alteration, shoe repair, and personal fitness health centers. During special land use review, the proposed plan included two buildings, a 2,048-square-foot restaurant building with an accessory pickup window, and an 8,528-square-foot multi-tenant building with an accessory pickup window. Since that time, the plans have been revised to include one multi-tenant building. At its meeting on May 3rd, 2021, Planning Commission recommended approval of the site plan with conditions. Jade, did you have anything to add to that?
No, I think that was pretty thorough. So I have nothing at this time.
Okay, Summer, did you have anything to add? As a representative?
Um, no, it was pretty self-explanatory. It was pretty easy going through the Planning Commission on this one.
Okay. Did anyone need to be promoted to panelists for this, for questions at all?
Only if there were questions.
Okay. Does the board have any questions or comments?
I do. Tanya, of course.
Tanya?
Yeah, so I just want to understand what we are adapting. Are we adapting to approve the site plan with the signage for the no right turn? Is that what we are doing? Because that is only concern I have, and Patrick answered my questions, so.
Yeah, you can, you can promote Patrick if you'd like, but that'll be, that'll be a part of, that is one of the conditions of this approval. So it's all approval, yes.
Just, Patrick, let's sit down under F desk one, or can?
Can, MST.
Okay. Hello, Patrick.
Mute.
Patrick, did you hear Tanya's question?
Uh, yes.
No, I just said Patrick already answered my question about the 180-degree turn. And so are we, if we are approving based on the RBA says that condition to the signage? So I just wanted to understand that we are approving it with the condition that they use the signage for no right turns?
Um, I'd like to hear the description and explanation of the 180-degree turn. It was hard for me looking at the maps to see exactly what we were talking about, and what the issue was.
Sure, I can, I can answer that. As, on the site plan, as someone is traveling north through the pickup window, and they're exiting the pickup window lane, they come to the stop sign where they're ultimately going to exit that lane. And the concern of the Planning Commission was that if they try to take a right, that that turn radius would be so tight that they would be swinging out into the opposite lane to make that 180-degree turn. And so what the Planning Commission wanted was either that curbing on the right side to, to turn leftward, to direct traffic to go left or westbound, and/or some signage at the end that prohibits a right turn.
Okay. All right, because there's no exit there on the right. It's just, is that even parking? That must be parking on the right.
Yeah, to the far right, there's a row of parking spaces.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not looking at the right. Oh, yeah, there they are. No, I'm looking at the right one. Um, okay, and then the supervisor mentioned that this was approved with exceptions, so I'm assuming that was one of the exceptions. Is that the only exception?
The other major condition was to either have a sign or some curbing to discourage or prevent right turns. The other conditions that were noted by the Planning Commission, they, there were some modifications to allow 82 parking spaces, which is a little more than the minimum number of spaces. And the reason that modification was granted was because if the building were to be occupied by restaurants or high-intensity uses, those parking spaces may be needed. And with the future tenants unknown, they wanted to, they wanted to have sufficient parking. And then the only other condition was to, any necessary landscape revisions to have those corrected. Sometimes those are discovered by our landscape architect or during our field inspections where landscape revisions have to be corrected, but they, they meet all their counts and everything. So anything landscaping related would be minor.
And lastly for me, I noticed a mention of the elevations and gray horizontal delineation going on with the brickwork. Chairman Green said, I'm not sure what he meant by that. I looked at the elevations. I guess that can be picked up in a later conversation and a later approval point.
This one I can actually address now. The, the plans that are in the packet are, include some color elevations. And there were some differences with some of the elevations on the east, west, and south sides. Specifically, there are square tanned brick areas along those sides that kind of break up. Uh, specifically there are, um, square tanned brick areas along those sides that kind of break up the facade overall. And so, um, it just adds a little bit of, of interest and breaks up the area, uh, but is nevertheless still brick. And the planning commission was looking for something just to break up the long wall.
Okay, so those were added after the planning commission? Is that what you're saying? So we're seeing them? Okay.
That's correct.
Gotcha. I see. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael?
Yeah, Patrick, was that your recommendation to increase the number of parking spaces or was that, uh, did that come organically from the commission itself?
Um, that was originally proposed by the applicant. They had proposed more parking spaces than the ordinance required. The ordinance was, um, a straight formula of one space per 250 square feet. And, um, the applicant asked for, uh, more spaces than, uh, was permitted because the zoning ordinance, it has a minimum number of spaces, but also has a maximum number of spaces. So that sites are not overparked. However, the planning commission may allow an increase, uh, in the maximum or a decrease in the minimum depending on site conditions. And so when we looked at it, um, if we didn't use the, um, the general one space per 250 square feet, but if we instead used one space per 65 square feet, which is what's required for a restaurant, um, there would be a lot more parking demand. Um, so for that reason, and because tenants can turn over sometimes, um, the planning commission had recommended the applicant's proposal for 82 spaces. And we recommended approval of it as well.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Any more questions or comments? Clark Segras, can you please take a roll call on the motion?
Foster.
Hi.
Ganguly.
Hi.
Graham Hudak.
Hi.
Segras, hi. Slavens.
Hi.
Snyderman.
Hi.
Thank you. Motion passes. Item G2, can I have a motion to consider approval of a special land use for a group childcare home on Shannon Frank daycare?
Madam Supervisor. I move to the board about the following resolution. Approval of a special land use for a group childcare home, Shannon Frank or Frankie daycare. Whereas the project sponsor Shan Frankie, uh, has requested special land use approval from, for a group childcare home at 7138 Foxwood Drive, uh, located in the Fox Meadows condominium. And whereas planning commission reviewed the request and applicable criteria and voted nine to zero. To recommend approval of the special land use, including a modification to the separation distance from 607, 6700 Stone Bridge to allow the, or sorry, Stirbridge to allow the current separation distance of approximately 1,250 feet. Subject to the condition that owner maintains all state licensing for the group childcare home. Now therefore be it resolved, the board trustees, the Charter Township of Canton, Michigan does hereby approve the special land use request for a group daycare home for Shannon Frankie at 7138 Foxwoods Drive on tax parcel number listed. A modification to the separation distance from 6,700, uh, Stirbridge to allow the current separation distance for approximately 1,250 feet. Subject to the condition that the owner maintains all state licensing for the group childcare home.
Support.
Thank you. The applicant proposes to conduct a group childcare home and a personal residence at 7138 Foxwoods Drive. Ms. Frank presently has a license for a family childcare home, which allows for up to six children, which is a permitted use in a residential district. Any childcare use for more than six children is a special land use. Group childcare homes licensed in the state of Michigan allow for up to 12 children. The special land use criteria for group childcare homes are established in the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act 125.3206. At its meeting on May 3, 2021, the planning commission recommended approval of the special land use subject to conditions. Uh, Jade, did you have anything to add to that? Jade or Patrick?
No, just to answer any questions if there are any.
Summer, do you have anything?
Um, I would say that it's, um, pretty self-explanatory with, um, the minutes. I will say, um, there were a couple of letters that came to the pre, planning commission um, opposing the change. Um, the residents were under the, um, impression that it was a change in zoning and not a special land use, um, application. But ultimately, um, the commission felt that, um, since, um, she already had, um, a daycare operating and she already had a number of children and it followed the law and, you know, we weren't, um, she wasn't disturbing her neighbors, that it was fine to approve, um, the special land use application.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? All right. Thanks. Um, Clark Segras, please take a roll call on the motion.
Foster.
Hi.
Ganguly.
Hi.
Graham Hudak.
Hi.
Segras, hi. Slavens.
Hi.
Snyderman.
Hi.
Motion passes. Item G3, consider approval of a purchase order increase for a dumpster enclosure at CSC. Have a motion, please?
Yep.
Can you read it? Do you want someone else to read it?
No, I need to resize my, I can go into the details, but I need to resize my PDF because every time I click on the, um,
Oh, it shrinks.
The left, it, it shrinks it down to 20%. So I have to increase it to a reasonable amount and find the resolution that I was clicking to find in the first place. So.
I don't know why it does that.
I have now found it and I am ready. Madam Supervisor, I move to approve an increase to the purchase order listed, uh, in the amount of $1,150 to be paid from the account number listed to Carpentry Concepts and Ceilings LLC at 1-8786 Susanna, Livonia, Michigan 4152 for the dumpster enclosure at Canton Sports Center, project number 200080.
Support. Thank you. The dumpster enclosure at the Canton Sports Center is a CIP project as listed with a budget amount of about $11,000. Canton Leisure Services Open Purchase Order is listed in the amount of $9,850 for the dumpster wall replacement at CSC. During construction, staff was informed by Carpentry Concepts and Ceilings LLC, there was no footer to the original dumpster and that one must be added, increasing the cost of the project by $1,150. This additional cost caused the original PO to surpass $10,000. Therefore, we are recommending a purchase order increase in the amount of $1,150 to the listed PO for the added footer on the CSC dumpster enclosure. Greg, did you have anything to add?
No, nothing further to add. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments?
Just say this is probably one of the most exciting RBAs we've ever done.
Right. This is as exciting as I can bring you.
I like non-exciting ones, actually.
Clark Segras, please take a roll call on the motion.
Foster.
Hi.
Born, uh, Ganguly.
Hi.
Graham Hudak.
Hi.
Segras, hi. Slavens.
Hi.
And Snyderman.
Hi.
Motion passes. Item G4. Consider awarding contract and approve purchase order for projects in connection with the capital improvement program.
All right. Madam Supervisor. I move that the, uh, the board approve the contracts and, and the purchase orders for the Heritage Park Ball Field in Heritage Park, Parks Maintenance Building Roofing Projects to Roof One LLC at 275 South Telegraph Road, Tonnyack, Michigan 48341 and the Fellows Creek Siding Projects to Gold Star Commercial at 264 Executive Drive, Troy, Michigan 48083. As identified in the capital improvement plan and to approve the attached budget, uh, the attached budget adjustments. Uh, those aren't budget adjustments, are they? What the, those are just listings of each project?
Yes. Um, there should not be budget adjustments.
Uh, my apologies. I, yeah, okay. So we're good.
Support.
Thank you. In connection with the capital improvement plan, we are recommending the following projects be awarded. Roof One Heritage Park Parks and Golf Maintenance Building Roof Replacement Project as listed, 45,410 budgeted, 45,340 awarded. Roof One Heritage Park Ball Field Building Roof Replacement Project is listed, amount budgeted 13,250, amount awarded 9,675. Gold Star Commercial Fellows Creek Clubhouse Siding Project is listed, amount budgeted 38,500, amount awarded 28,750. The projects had gone through the request for proposal process with the lowest qualified bid being recommended for award and fall within the budget amount in the program. Greg, is there anything you want to add?
The only thing I'd point out is the Fellows Creek Siding. Uh, you may recall that was, um, the consent calendar at our last meeting. We had just transposed a number in the, um, motion. The description had the proper number, but the motion had a transposed number. Tonight to get that amended.
All right. Are there any questions or comments? All right. Clark Segras, please take a roll call on the motion.
Foster.
Hi.
Ganguly.
Hi.
Graham Hudak.
Hi.
Segras, hi. Slavens.
Hi.
Snyderman.
Hi.
Thanks. Motion passes. Item G5, consider approving a request to purchase ammunition.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the purchase of ammunition utilizing state of Michigan contract pricing from, uh, Kessler, uh, Police Supply in the amount of $54,242.
Support.
Thank you. The police department is requesting to purchase ammunition for rifles and handguns to be used on duty and for training qualifications. Keiser, Kaiser Police Supply has quoted the ammunition utilizing the state of Michigan, Michigan contract pricing for a total cost of $54,242. Uh, Chad, do you have anything to add?
I do have to state seven months ago, uh, there's a, and still is a national shortage. Our employees put a, uh, request in at this location because of the state bid. They told us potentially in nine months it would be ready. We, uh, were surprised to receive a delivery, uh, two months early before we brought this to the board. So we, uh, placed it in our custody and locked it up and brought it to you today. We're still waiting on 90 boxes of nine millimeter.
Okay. Thank you. Will that be on a separate RBA then?
No, no, it's included in this RBA.
Okay.
So it's a high risk, low frequency. This is training ammo. It should last as well into 2022.
All right. Thank you. Any questions or comments? All right. Clark Segras, please take a roll call on the motion.
Foster.
Hi.
Ganguly.
Hi.
Graham Hudak.
Hi.
Segras, hi. Slavens.
Hi.
And Snyderman.
Hi.
Thank you. Motion passes. Item G6, consider approving the purchase of one digital plan review table and an associated amendment to the 2021 fire budget.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve purchase of one digital plan review table from I Project Solutions, the amount of $10,410. And to approve the amendment as listed in the 2021 fire budget, uh, for this purchase.
Support.
Thank you. The fire department is requesting to purchase one digital plan review table from I Project Solutions LLC in the amount of $10,410. The department is also requesting approval of an amendment to the 2021 budget to accommodate this purchase. Um, Director Stockline, do you have anything to add to it?
Uh, just that this was kind of an unexpected purchase. When we, um, switched the rest of the township over to that, we kind of lost track that the fire department needed to read plans as well. So, um, this will allow us to read the plans when we receive them digitally.
Any comments or questions? All right. Clark Segras, please take roll call on the motion.
Foster.
Hi.
Ganguly.
Hi.
Graham Hudak.
Hi.
Segras, hi. Slavens.
Hi.
Snyderman.
Hi.
Motion passes. Okay, that was our last item on the agenda for general calendar. The next item is public comment. Is there any public comment? And raise your hand. Okay, I have a, oops. Okay, so we have Betty. Um, Betty, if you could please give your, give your name and your address and, uh, you have three minutes for your public comment. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, my name is Betty Brown Chappelle and I live at 4499 Seymour Drive and have resided there for over 20 years. Um, my issue that I would like the trustees, um, to be aware of is that I had exceptional problems last week getting my garbage picked up. Um, my husband and I together made three different contacts to the vendor and were told each time, or at least initially, that, um, the garbage would be picked up. You all probably know it was rather hot week. And so as the week went on, the garbage was not very pleasant to be around. So finally on Friday, I just had had enough. I called the office. My husband's out of town. I called the office again, spoke to a woman named Linda and she said, we just cannot do anything about that. They are on another route and they cannot interrupt themselves to come and pick that up. You just have to wait till Monday. And I was expecting company on Saturday and that was not adequate answer. And I believe that the staff was rude. So I contacted trustee Ganguly and I also contacted the supervisor's office. And within about an hour, they did come and pick the garbage up. And what my, uh, reason for bringing this up is I did want, um, the board to understand that there are these types of problems and that the people you have charged to take care of them are not behaving in a responsive way. And I should not have had to wait five days nor to contact the supervisor's office or the trustee who, both of you, your offices and, um, trustee Ganguly were absolutely wonderful. Um, but that should not have happened and I would like the company to apologize to us. And I would like them to figure out a protocol so that such would not happen. I do not blame the, the individual people who pick up, uh, garbage, but rather their protocol for redressing and the people who clearly ignored us. That is my issue that I wanted to bring to your attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Betty. I'm glad they picked, they were finally able to pick it up. We will, we will talk to them again. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you. Next we have, um, Mr. Patrick Nixon. Go ahead, Mr. Please state your, um, name and address.
Uh, my name is Patrick Nixon. My address is 6841 Ardsley Drive here in Canton. I'm a 45-year resident and homeowner of Canton Township. Uh, on May 21st, I sent a letter to Supervisor Graham Hudak and the board complaining about an inspection non-compliance notice one issued to me on April 23rd, but not received until May 20th by the building department or the water department. And I can't determine who because the notice was unsigned. Uh, because I believe that enforcement action was, uh, petty and abrupt and threatening and unreasonable. That letter related to the program and process authorized by the board, being jointly implemented by Hydrocorp and Canton Township to enforce against existing homeowners, not new construction, an obscure portion of the Michigan Plumbing Code that has not been widely disclosed by either the state or Canton. A letter recited the details of the process as it was applied to me and complained that the actions of Hydrocorp in Canton were legally unauthorized, uh, incomplete or unreasonable. I won't go into that leather further now, except to say that Canton issued a notice of non-compliance, did not sign it, apparently delayed mailing it or did not acc. did not sign it, apparently delayed mailing it, or did not account for postal service delays, and then demanded compliance within four days under threat of further enforcement action. My letter is before the board and I expect appropriate response to it. In forty five years of residence in Canton, I've never received such a threatening and unreasonable letter from Canton government. After May twentieth, I learned that numerous homes, probably the overwhelming majority in Canton, are apparently not being inspected and not being issued violation or non compliance notices or failure to install backflow preventers on exterior faucets. Therefore, I believe the enforcement process and the notice was narrow, selective and inequitable against me because my home became selectively inspected only because it has a sprinkler system. Accordingly, I sent a second letter to Supervisor Graham Hodek and the board on May twenty fourth. Why is Hydrocorp or Canton apparently inspecting and sending violation notices only to homes that have sprinkler systems, even when they're obviously not in operation like mine? Is Canton confining the scope of the homes to be inspected and wielding its power of enforcement selectively to keep the public objection or outcry down? If you're going to enforce against me, enforce against others as well. My comments today relate not only to the actions taken against me, but to the propriety and reasonableness of the general enforcement program the board has initiated and authorized against homeowners of Canton. I include by reference herein my two letters of May twenty first and May twenty fourth. May I suggest that the best way to resolve this matter is extension of the May twenty fourth date for compliance for forty days until August third, so I can get my sprinkler system repaired. Second, inspection and declaration of compliance with the faucet portion of the May twentieth notice. Third, final inspection of the repaired sprinkler system. Fourth, final acknowledgement of full compliance in writing under the signature of an appropriate Canton Township official, not Hydrocorp. And five, a full review and reconsideration by this board of trustees of the process by which notices of non compliance with these plumbing requirements come to be issued, including prior approval and signature by a senior Canton Township official of the facts underlying, the timing, the compliance deadline, the equity and the need for such a notice. I do have some good news. I learned less than an hour ago that it's possible that my exterior faucets, which were inspected and proved by the Canton Building Department when my home was rebuilt, they may have back vacuum breaker backflow preventers contrary to the claims of Hydrocorp. Whether or not that's true, which I'm still trying to confirm, it exposes a deficiency in Canton's enforcement process. Failure to have an actual government inspector confirm non compliance before Canton issues a non compliance notice. So I think this can be worked out.
Yes, all right. I appreciate it. Thank you.
That could be worked out. Frankly, with someone a little more senior than the building department with whom my experience, let's just say, has not been easy in the past.
Thank you, Mr. Nixon. Mr. Byrd will be calling you tomorrow. Just to let the board know, I received those letters, heard copied into my office yesterday. We'll scan them to you. But Mr. Byrd will be calling you and walking you through your particular situation. Jade, could you please just give a high level? We passed an RBA on the connection program a couple of weeks ago. Could you please give a high level overview of the program and how it works?
Sure. So that was a lot to take in, so I'm not going to speak directly to that particular issue until I see all the information. But this is a mandate put on the township by through the Michigan State Drinking Water Act that is run through Eagle. And we have contracted with Hydrocorp to go out and make the initial assessments of the entire township. This is a five year program that gets through the entire township in the five years. It's broken up into five zones. And through that process, if there are potential cross contaminant connections, then they are sent a letter to where they have to make sure that if there's repairs that are needed, they have to get those repairs done by a licensed plumber and then turn in that proof to the township to show that there is no contamination exposure and that the proper backflows preventers are put in. This does to say that not every home needs to do this is correct because if they do not have a sprinkler system, if they did not have a pool, if they do not have a hot tub, if there's something else that's not, if they have nothing else connected directly to their water system, then they do not need to go through this process. If they feel that they have, they do not have any of that. And we've had a few examples of this where someone says they have a lance, an irrigation system and they don't use it anymore, then they just need to disconnect it and show proof that it's disconnected and that goes away. If there's more specific questions in regards to I guess I can answer those, but that's a real high level overview of this of the cross connection program.
Sure, thank you. And Amy's working with you and you'll get and Mr. Byrd is going to call him tomorrow. So thank you very much. And the board will be made known of what was discussed.
Sure.
All right, thank you. Are there any other comments or questions? Board members? Okay, I just want to give an update on CDC. So we are going to, so the guidelines from the OSHA have changed. My OSHA have changed this week, as you know, accordingly with the CDC. And what's going to happen, the recommendation is to continue screening employees. Non vaccinated employees will continue to wear masks and social distance. Hand sanitizer, floor markings and continued facility cleaning will be done per CDC guidelines. Signs will be placed outside the buildings and in the office space that non vaccinated people must wear a mask and this includes the public. So that's the statement that we came up with today with the my OSHA. Diane did a little bit more research and so did Chris. If you guys have any more questions. But I want to, the next item is some things that happened are, so the mom's, the mom's sundance happened past weekend and it was a lot of fun. May twenty sixth at eleven AM, there's going to be a first responders memorial ceremony. It's going to be at four one one eight one Edward Heinz Drive. It's a memorial for first responders and it's hosted by Warren Evans. The Canton Cup is also this weekend. That's going to be at greatly reduced numbers. We aren't going to have the number of teams as we did before because it was planned during a couple of months ago, so we had to decide on what the limits would be at that point. The Memorial Day Observance in Canton is going to be on Memorial Day at ten AM behind the Township Hall. It's hosted by the Canton Fire Department Honor Guard. And we've had a lot of resident thank yous to our police and planning groups and fire department. So that's always good to see. Does anyone have anything else? Steven?
Um, I just wanted to mention and direct to Director Holenberger in particular, that driving by the summit, I noticed that the roof looks really great. And it looks a lot different than the summit that's behind you right now in terms of color and it's nice and bright.
Need a new photo.
Yeah, nice and bright and shiny. So I thought that looked great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Anyone else? Jade, you edit your hand up?
Yeah, I just wanted to let the board know and for anyone that's participating. Recycling has been a hot button, hot topic over the course of the last couple of months. And we are actually hosting a recycling one on one webinar this Thursday. It starts at six thirty. You have to register. We only have room for a hundred people on the Zoom call. So go through the Facebook page and sign up for that. You can also find it on our website. But we have eighty five registrants as of today, so we've got room for fifteen more. We will be recording it so that will be replayed later. We are hoping to actually livestream it to Facebook as well. And then we will be doing more of these because the response has been much better than we anticipated.
Thank you. That'd be important. I just want, I got a, oh, from our front desk. Oh, there you go. Okay. Our front desk at the summit, non vaccinated guests at the summit will have to be required to wear a mask and there will be a sign on the door that states that. Okay. Let me see. Anything else? Any other questions or comments from the board or trustees? Directors, nothing? All right, great. Well, everybody have a happy Memorial Day after all that and have a good week, good safe weekend. And is there click it and ticket now, Chad? Is this a weekend for that?
Yeah, it'll be extending through May thirty first in partnership with the Michigan State Police.
Are there any spots in particular or it's all throughout Michigan?
It'd be Michigan Avenue.
Amber wants to know what.
I want to know what roads to avoid.
Very important. We do advertise it, we put signage out. It's good for residents to know it's, the goal is compliance and safety, so.
We're a babushka, don't worry.
So, yeah, so Michigan Avenue and Ford Road are high traffic areas. You'll see the officers out with a police sergeant and lieutenant.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, well, thanks, everyone. Have a great night.
Do we have a motion?
Oh. Ma'am Supervisor, do we, oh, do we got quorum still?
Yes, we do.
Supervisor, I move to the board. Move to close.
Support.
Seagres, please take a roll call on the motion.
All right.
Board members are still on.
Is everyone still on? All right. Foster.
Nope, she's frozen.
She's muted. Oh, frozen.
Yeah.
Ganguly.
Aye.
Graham Hudek.
Aye.
Seagres, aye Slavens.
Aye.
Snyderman.
Aye.
We can still, without Summer Frozen adjourned then.
Add a majority.
Thank you. Bye.